And if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Must have some teachers in the audience today. I heard everyone call to action right away. Um, all right. First, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from October 9th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post that the motion carries. And we get to the most exciting part of the night. Um, I'd like to invite, uh, Dr. Amy Winter, Executive Director of Education Services, um, and has a whole team with her tonight. Um, so talk about instructional and peer coaches.
I'm very excited to have a team here tonight to introduce. So I'll just take a quick little intro here. Um, when you think about coaches, I think one of the most important things is those coaches need to be a trusted partner. And those relationships are done through those daily interactions. And so what I'm really excited about is that these coaches, and we have two different types. And so my hope for the takeaway today is that you'll know the difference between the two. But these are trusted adults that are working alongside our educators in the buildings and at the sites, um, and also district-wide, just really supporting the work in those moments where maybe a educator needs a cheerleader, or maybe they just need some additional support, or a better way to talk through a, you know, a situation, or, um, coming up with some other solutions. So, super excited to have them come up here. We have peer coaches and we have equity and instructional coaches. They're going to introduce themselves. And, um, I'm also going to have Leslie Gomez and Brandon Wilcox, who are also part of my team. They each support, uh, each of the groups. So Leslie supports the peer coaches and Brandon supports the equity instructional coaches. So they'll give you a quick little intro, and then the rest of the team will come up and, um, share a little bit about their roles.
Thanks, Amy.
Good evening, Board. My name is Leslie Gomez. I'm, uh, Assistant Director of Educational Services. And I'm excited to introduce the peer coach team to you this evening. I'm gonna work my way through all of their acronyms. So the peer coach team is on the ground doing a lot of the work for, through our, uh, Alternative Teacher Professional Pay System, uh, which is ATPPS, and TDNE Plan, which is our, uh, Teacher Growth and Development and Evaluation Plans. There it is.
There it is.
ATPPS and TDNE Plans. And they support some other acronyms as well. They support our Building Instructional Leadership Teams, which is our BUILT teams, our Professional Learning Communities, our PLCs. Uh, they also support and provide a lot of organization and training for our Mentor Colleague Program, as well as lots of one-on-one coaching for all of the teachers in our district.
Good evening. How you doing?
Great.
Great.
Glad to have you here.
So the ENI coach position is new, and, um, in just the first few weeks of school, um, and we've found that our coaches have been in nearly every classroom. They've developed and led at least 50 different, um, PD opportunities and team, um, team meetings in our buildings. They've collectively served over 200 teachers so far. At each one of those touchpoints, our coaches have used their expertise to influence and push professional growth and reflective thinking, a student-focused mindset that will ultimately result in greater achievement for our students, our teachers, and our community. So I'd like to take this opportunity to let our instructional coaches introduce themselves, share a few testimonials about how, uh, both our peer and our ENI coaches have added value to our community. And I will let them come on up.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Bryan. Um, I am second from the left on the picture here. Uh, we have Lauren Ryan, who is a peer coach, as well as an equity and instructional coach. She's kind of balancing those two positions right now. I am a peer coach and the ATPPS and TD coordinator. Kathleen Hanley is currently a peer coach. And we have Chris Balky, who is currently serving students, his special education students in the high school. And he is our future peer coach when we can find someone to take his position in the classroom. So we're, he's doing everything he can to join our peer coach world, just as Lauren is doing everything she can to live in both. On the next slide, you'll see, um, this kind of outlines the peer coach work that we do. We are teacher leaders on special assignment. Uh, we partner with every staff member, uh, 240-plus, from birth to three, all the way through ABE. So we will see and work with everyone. Um, we observe and we coach those staff through the TDE plan. We guide the work that they do for ATPPS. Um, and most recently, tomorrow is our last day of launching PLCs for the year. And then after tomorrow's PLC launch, our final launch, um, we continue to support those PLC teams, um, each week. Uh, we also plan and lead the Mentor Colleague Program, which specifically supports our teachers and staff new to the district. Uh, and as Leslie also mentioned, we are on the Building and Instructional Leadership Teams. We work collaboratively, thank goodness, um, and we are non-evaluative.
And on the next slide, um, I'm here to talk about kind of what it looks like day-to-day in our jobs. So we meet with staff, teachers, and support staff being maybe social workers or school counselors, at least four times to go through our peer coach cycle, which mirrors the evaluative, uh, cycle from, um, an administrator. So it helps them work through that process, find out the details where the paperwork is, and the files for them to, uh, go through that process. Just like Tiffany said, we launched and we regularly meet and support with our PLCs to walk them through the collaborative inquiry cycle. And we advise and guide staff in the ATPPS plans, because many times we're meeting with them and they just might have a quick question, does this qualify? Doesn't it qualify? And we're kind of boots-on-the-ground that can answer that question right away. Um, and that plan, of course, supports their professional knowledge and instructional skills. And we plan and facilitate mentor workshops to support and retain the great new staff that we have here in South St. Paul. And on the next slide, I get to brag about this person, who's just fabulous. This is one of our teacher testimonials that Tiffany is capable, is a capable professional who took lots of notes during an observation. So I should start, sorry, I'm gonna back up. This is from Mike Sansilo. He's a high school physics teacher, and he's one of the teachers that Tiffany met with. And Tiffany tracked the number of instances, students spoke to the whole group, and to each other in a breakout activity. She made things visible that are not easy for me to see and made this experience very useful. We know that teachers are busy planning and obsessing, uh, about those, maybe that, planning and assessing students and managing behavior. And so a peer coach can come and take an outside perspective and, um, give them some insight. Uh, she took the time to know him, his goals and his specific needs, and was great in our praise for the things that went well. And I love the last part, that observations are not to be dreaded or feared. They're one of the important tools that we can use to induce the changes that are so desperately needed to engage students, to turn them into active, self-sufficient learners. So, good job, Tiffany.
Very nice.
I think the instructional, equity and instructional coaches are next. Did you have questions for us before we sat down?
Is there, is there a training that you go through to become a peer coach? Is it a degree? Is it?
Sometimes it feels that way. No, but we do, um, we, uh, are going through cognitive coaching. Um, there are eight, um, sessions or workshop days for that. And it's nice, they, we started with the first two days before the school year, and then we get to practice a little bit. And then in September, we had the next two days. So, um, the Kathleen, Chris, and I are all about halfway through that process. Um, next week, we'll have the second half starting.
Does that come from the Department of Education? Who does the training of you guys?
That is a good ques- I'm not sure who we source that through. Um, does anyone know who that sourced through, Leslie?
So, um, cognitive.
Cognitive coaching is its own organization that many school districts, um, across the state use. And it's a professional coaching, especially developed for educators.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add to that. So peer coaching is one of our career ladder positions. That's included in our ATPPS plan, which was just, um, re-approved last year. So we have two career ladder positions. One is serving on the Building Instructional Leadership Teams, which is BUILT. So we have teacher representatives that get to serve in a leadership capacity at individual school sites. And then peer coaching is another one of those career ladder opportunities for, um, South St. Paul to develop leaders within the district that want to have that, that practice and professional development in developing skills that they maybe otherwise wouldn't have the opportunity to develop. Um, so it's a great opportunity for teachers that want to stay in the teaching world, but want to support their leadership development.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Just a point of clarity, too, on the career ladder piece, which is what, why it's not so clean over here, was, uh, Jen Saxhour was one of our peer reviewers, moved to equity and instructional coach, then became AP. And Lauren's been kind of following on her heels. So it's just, that's why it's a little bit of a shuffle in terms of, um, movement. But it's really neat to see that growing from within and the importance of teacher leadership. So, just as they're explaining, I was in this role and so-and-so's in that role, and Kim was with us as a IB coordinator, but stayed on as a coach. So just kind of some of that shuffle. But it's neat to see all, um, these amazing people that have been here growing from within.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I love what a culture shift you're also helping facilitate, because, um, you know, teaching can be such a lonely experience, despite the fact that you're surrounded by so many students through that. Um, the idea that you have another adult in the room who can see what's going on and talk you through, that's really valuable. So, thank you.
Well, good evening, Board. Uh, my name is Tom Parks. Uh, I am second from your left there. Um, and I represent Lauren Ryan, also Equity and Instructional Coach, uh, at Lincoln. Our other elementary coach is Kim Laska at Capoja. I represent Team Middle School and Bill Bowman, who passed out, uh, a little bit of who we are and what we offer, represents high school. And I just want to point out, that is one kind of unique aspect between our coaching role and the peer coaching role. We are radically with and for kids by being with and for teachers, by being site-based. Um, and so we get to know the pulse of a building, of what's happening, uh, day-to-day, um, and being specifically with one set of teachers. So, we are teachers on special assignment. I just want to say anecdotally, um, as somebody who's coming from another district and is these new positions, um, for me, these speak a little bit to the values of South St. Paul by showing when four positions are posted last spring, that there's going to be these, these new roles, who you are and what you all value. Um, I think about a conversation that I had today, just ending out the school day with a teacher who had started the week, feeling, um, frustrated, uh, and feeling, um, like it was a hard day. Um, and I met with a number of colleagues, and, um, I do some contract work at the University of Minnesota with some faculty there, hearing about the number of staff who've left school districts just in the first quarter. I pride myself, and I want to speak for our team, on being able to not only enhance the work of our teachers, but sustain the work of our teachers as well. Um, and you can see this menu of options of things and where we show up, um, to do that.
So I was, um, I asked to share a little bit more of the day-to-day in the role of the equity and instructional coach. Um, for both Kim and I at the elementary level, it looks a little bit different than it does at the secondary. Um, but part of our work, especially this year, is to help implement and support our new literacy curriculum, which we're so grateful to have. And our teachers are working really, really hard to unpack and understand and plan. So, we're doing daily support of teachers, working through both our wit and wisdom comprehension, um, reading curriculum, and also our UFLY phonics-based K2 program. So our day-to-day work looks like meeting with individual teachers, um, weekly, working with staff, um, grade teams, and working together collaboratively to help understand our teaching. Um, we're kind of, we describe ourselves as a revolving door of support. Especially Kim, her office is like right near the front door, mine as well, but I'm kind of only there part-time. But we're there basically answering every single question as they come up, or directing someone to help solve their own problems, or find the answer collectively. And because of that work, we're sort of a liaison between, um, our Department of Learning folks, and then also people with our, within our curriculum. We're the ones going back and forth and trying to find solutions to different questions that we have, and help support the professional development that needs to go along with the pretty heavy work that teachers are doing this year. Um, and so it's really wonderful to have teacher-level support of folks that have recently been in the classroom and are still really immersed in that work that teachers do, um, and able to kind of problem-solve from that coaching lens. Um, and if we go to the next slide, and we can come back to this, this is just a few, um, photos to illustrate our new reading curriculum, wit and wisdom, and just to sort of highlight the collaborative nature of the work, um, that it involves with students working together and using texts to, um, use evidence to show their learning and thinking. It's a, it's an amazing curriculum, um, that's gonna do wonders for our elementary students, but it's a lot of work to understand and unpack. So, we're happily doing that work with teachers. And if you want to go back, um, well, actually back, and then we'll go forward. I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything here. So, and we work really closely with our Building Instructional Leadership Teams to align our skip goals and our skip work to, um, driving instructional outcomes for teachers, um, and sort of providing that professional learning, looking at, we have date, uh, grade-level data meetings to analyze trends that are happening in classrooms, and relying on our, um, research-based instructional practices, support the work that's happening, um, in classrooms. So as Tom said, too, we're doing a lot of very, um, specific work to the elementary world, that is a little bit different than the work that a peer coach does on a more global scale with our whole district. So, thank you.
Hello, once again, I'll just, I'm Bill Bowman. I'm at the high school. And you see a few different quotes. I'm gonna go ahead here now. Thank you. So, too, when I hand it out to you, you can see, some of the teachers, too, I was new for them, what an instructional coach, an equity and instructional coach was. So I created a, a graphic for them off and finding, you know, I was, have come from a sales and marketing background, you can tell. Finding, getting people to open up your emails and see was a big part of establishing the relationship. Just giving you an idea of what, what could be going on with this. And then in the back, too, there are even more quotes that we got from people, I think, to see a wide variety of people we touch, uh, every single day. Just one thing, just give you an idea, like, just a typical day, a day that I had today. Started out, we had a BUILT meeting this morning, and, uh, been, I've worked closely with the principal this way to kind of establish what that is, but I've kind of started taking over it. And we had, building up leaders, I, we had other people facilitate. Well, I create the agenda and kind of move it along with it. We looked at data from, uh, staff recently, so we could plan out our next, uh, staff development that we have, one way or another. Uh, I planned some other meetings with other teachers. Um, I did some more research and dug into data on certain students we had. Then I, um, today also, then team taught. I'm gonna go ahead and co-teach with a teacher for five straight days. He wanted me to come on into one of his classes, so I could go ahead and see what his environment was, and also give him tips every single day, and have, as you mentioned before, another adult in the room. It'd be really, really nice, so that I could see things from his perspective, he could see things while I'm teaching, that maybe are a little bit different. So, it's kind of see, we cater to their needs and exactly what they need done, any single day, from wherever they're at. So.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So like I said, one of the uniqueness is how is this impacting our teachers directly and impacting our sites? And so Leah graciously offered to come and close us out, to just talk about how is this impacting her as she's, uh, supporting the middle school?
Thank you. And I think that the, the quote that, um, Bill included in the handout says a lot of it, is I see teachers working with our equity instructional coaches every single day, almost every single hour. And I see teachers walking away with smiles and ready to go into the next day or days with a really positive outlook. And when students have teachers that show up like that, students win every time. And it is exciting. Um, it, I, I use Tom as a sounding board. I hope he doesn't get sick of me soon. And I, I ask a bunch of questions, and he gives me some suggestions. And, um, I, I really also appreciate that we, we can kind of go back and forth and share perspectives. Um, and it's, it's a really nice relationship, um, knowing that when, when the equity instructional coaches go into classrooms and it's not evaluative, evaluative, um, but when I go in and I can kind of piggyback over, over that work, and, you know, go in hand-in-hand and make sure that teachers are getting all the support they need, um, it, it feels more like building a system than, um, you know, punishing or saying, you, you, you know, you're not accountable for your work. And so I, I feel that this has set us up in so many positive ways. And I'm so happy that we've added the equity instructional coaches. And I'm really glad that we have the strong peer, uh, peer coaching staff, too. It feels like a great team to work with this year.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
So when is most of this happening? Is it through the day? Is it during prep hours? Before school, after school? Like, how do you account?
There's a lot of nodding out in the audience.
Just, how do you account for your time? And like, how do you make sure that you're not overdoing it yourself and trying to support X number of people? Like, how are you helping yourself, I guess, in that?
I don't know if anyone wants to respond to that.
Anyone?
One thing, I, I'm very fortunate that Tom and I share an office. So, you know, each day, we are processing with each other, supporting each other, providing information, insights to each other. We have different backgrounds, but really ones that complement each other very, very well. Uh, that way, I've got a few more years under my belt, we could say it that way, too. Tom comes with more of an equity bent this way, too, with a really strong theory grasp and everything, and his work at the university. So between the two of us, we really, really can plan out things that help all the teachers and even the district as we plan out different things.
So what's the difference between an equity coach and a peer coach?
So I would say that the peer coach is that district-wide umbrella.
Okay.
They're very tightly aligned with the plans that are kind of pre-written out. So, they're gonna do individual coaching, they're gonna support BUILT, uh, which are the site teacher leadership teams, and, um, they're supporting PLCs. So they kind of have a narrow scope, but the scope impacts the entire district as a whole. The equity and instructional coaches then have the ability to really put attention towards an actual site, be a little more adaptable based on the site needs, um, that come from day-to-day interactions with teachers. Again, still partnering with the site leadership team, working in conjunction with the administrators, um, really partnering the resources, uh, and the coaching support to make sure instruction is being impacted.
Okay, thank you.
So, peer coaching is a well-established program, too, in our district, which I'm really proud of.
Yep.
And over the years, it has really developed into something that is super robust. Um, and one thing that we focus specifically on is, um, individual growth and development plans for teachers. It's something required by the state, but we help facilitate the process for teachers to be reflective, um, practitioners, basically. And so we help that walk them through, well, between the three of us, we sort of divide the whole district and get a slice of everything. Um, and we help them set goals for the year by doing a self-reflection based on the rubric that they're evaluated on through their site. So we start with sort of their end goal. How are they evaluated? And what are their strengths that they bring to the table? And where do they want to focus their energy? And then our work, um, as Leslie mentioned, through cognitive coaching, or maybe it was Leslie, right? Yes, okay. Um, is to, to sort of build a reflective, um, capacity of our teachers in the district. So, we are really grateful to have the equity instructional coaches there on the ground in sites every day. But the peer coaching world has largely been a way to build the capacity of teachers to do reflective work on their own, when they're not with someone one-on-one. So the, the seven of us now can really kind of keep that work going and maybe move some of it along at a faster pace. But one of the unique things about peer coaching has been the whole observation cycle. A pre-observation, where we talk about what's gonna happen, and they set their goals for the lesson, we watch them teach in the moment, and we have a reflective conversation afterwards. And cognitive coaching is a specific type of training that we do to help someone think through their own, um, think through what's happening in their classroom, and apply that to a future situation, so that when they're not with their coach, they kind of have this mindset of, what does it mean to analyze my classroom and make decisions, um, based on evidence that I see. So, um, although we work with the whole district, our process is very similar. And I think, to answer the original question of how we balance our time, because we have a very systematic approach to how we coach people, the peer coaching world, while very, very busy and fills up our entire days plus more, is a very systematic approach to coaching. So, it's sort of repetitive in a way, but, um, different depending on who you're working with. But it all fits, um, just barely in the year that we have.
Thanks. Um, I, I just want to make sure I understand how we're able to have this great program. Um, and that, I want to make sure that this funding is, that, coming from our levy, and make sure that our community knows that, that we're able to do this because of the support of our community, um, and that we're delivering on some of the things that we've said we really need to invest in. So, really, thank you for coming. Um, this is a, a great way to show that what we've put some of that towards. And it really seems like we're getting a lot of benefits from that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, and one of the things, just one last thing, sorry. Um, I also really appreciate is this collective team in the room probably has a better pulse on what's going on inside our district than any one teacher, or any one site, or any one administrator. And both being able to kind of help us anticipate needs, problems, challenges, but also spreading successes around the building, I think can happen so much faster because of this team in front of us. And I just, a lot of gratitude for the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, that's always the fun part of the night, as, before we get to, um, some of our other business. Um, tonight, I do not have any, um, thing to highlight in terms of public listening sessions. Um, should you want to report anything to the Board through public listening, you can always do that through a form submission on our website or at 4:15, um, here in City Hall, before the first school board meeting of the month. I will turn it over to Vice Chair Weber, uh, to give a kind of committee of the whole update.
Thank you, Chair Roche. So today in our committee of the whole, um, we basically talked about the, the world's best workforce is a state, um, program acronym, meaning that we want all children to succeed. And there are different benchmarks and different goals, all the way from like pre-kindergarten through, um, making students, sure students are college and career-ready, to become part of Minnesota's world's best workforce. Um, and given the unemployment rate, we need all the young people we can to make sure that they, we're funneling them into, into the workforce. Um, and with that comes a lot of data. So we went through a lot of the data, both, um, as a whole, as reflected in the Minnesota comprehensive exams that are given every spring, um, through other, um, types of assessments and goals and things that we do as a district. We also have some very sobering numbers about how some of our children are not succeeding, and how do we, as a district, take that upon ourselves to do the training and the lessons and the teacher prep, and helping students to be able to come to grade level, and to come to be able to moving through the system in a successful manner. Um, so again, there's a lot of, some, some sobering statistics, some changes that we're making, some goal-setting that we're setting going through, um, going through the next years. And also, though, but having the knowledge and the, the corny acronym, that knowledge is power, that you can't fix what you don't know is broken. And so we had a really deep, in-depth conversation about what are the numbers, what are we doing to support them, and what are our goals going, going forward? Cause we also had a little thing called a pandemic that challenged education for a while, and still continues to challenge education, and how can we see our path, um, path forward? Um, and today, we mostly concentrated on the elementary cohort, and the high school cohort is soon to come. Um, so, um, Dr. Winter put together all of that information, and it was a, a breadth of quality information for us to be able to seek our way forward.
Excellent. Yep. Um, student success and outcomes is clearly gonna be a focus of everyone through the district. Uh, Dr. Zambrino, report from around the district.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I hope everyone had a good MEA break, and it's a, it's a grind, as we know. We heard just from our teacher leaders here, the, the work that goes into our school. So it's good to get a little bit of a reprieve, even if it was just to, to catch your breath, um, on that world's best workforce. I mean, we do have the world's best workforce. I'm just gonna go on record as saying that. And, um, we are, you know, really busy creating the conditions for, for better outcomes. And so excited about the support we've had from the Board, and as, um, Director Claflin mentioned, from the community, to put the right pieces in place, so we can continue to do, uh, smarter work, cause everyone's working super hard. But it's been a fantastic start to the year. I share, uh, in a Friday update with the Board, every Friday, things that I've seen. And I've been in all the buildings and just continue to be totally impressed by what I see. And I've been in all the buildings and just continue to be totally impressed by what I see, the work of our students, the work of our staff. And so just want to thank everyone for a great fall. Hard to believe November's around the corner, but we're getting there. So I did have a little trauma as I saw some snowflakes in the forecast because I still haven't recovered from all my sleep loss last year with those snowstorms. But we'll get back on that again. But do want to make sure people know, on November 7th, we do have four candidates for one open seat on our school board. Voting will take place at the Dakota County Historical Center, so not necessarily where you would typically go vote. So just make sure you go to the Historical Society there across from City Hall. We do, of course, want to make sure people have good information so you can hop on our website to learn more about our four candidates for board. It is an interesting ballot to see just one thing on the ballot. But what more important thing could there be than our school district? So please get out and vote and choose your candidate. As we move into the fall, we're getting ready here for the High Schools Theater presenting Wizard of Oz. I know every production I've seen from our high school has been fantastic. But that's coming up, as I said, November. So November 10th, 11th, and 12th, we've got some matinee-type time slots and then the 7 o'clock prime time. And those will all be happening at the secondary building auditorium. And you can purchase tickets on our website at the Activities and Athletics website. So just hop on there to get your tickets in advance. Great picture here of really fun thing coming back. We've talked about the pandemic. We are bouncing back, and it's nice to see that. And so we have brought back Read Across South St. Paul this year. That is a partnership between the district and the city. So big shout out to Deb Griffith for helping organize readers who will go once a month on a Friday to either Lincoln or Capoja or both, if you time that right, and be able to read. I've been able to get in there and do that myself. It's super fun. And again, this is where I say, like, I've been in the classrooms. Our kids are just so great. They're so curious. They listen so well, and you can see that in this picture. So it's super fun to get in there. So if you're interested, please reach out to Deb and let her know you want to get into the classrooms and read. Always talk about things we try to do beyond just our typical pre-K-12 and providing service to our broader community. So want to make sure people are aware of the Community Health Fair that's happening. It is free. You do not need to have insurance, but you can get yourself updated vaccines against the flu or COVID. There's dental services, blood pressure, blood sugar tests, all kinds of full-service, one-stop shop there. It's Thursday, November 2nd at Central Square from 3:00 to 6:00. So please take advantage of the Community Health Fair. Last week, we had Unity Day. And this is a really fun picture that Principal Bretoy's got his team to do now. I don't know how long, but I've seen it the last two Unity Days. I was there, you know, the kids are starting to get to know me, which is also really fun, being in a small district. And I was standing there as they were coming out of the meeting space, the performance area. And all the kids like, I thought you were going to be on the roof. Aren't you going to be on the roof? So Mr. Bretoy had told them all to look for me on the roof. So I had to quick climb the ladder and get up on the roof, which I did last year. But I'm not going to lie, I'm afraid of heights. So even just standing up there, I don't know what it is about being up high that makes you think you're going to fall over because you don't think that when you're standing on terra firma. But super fun to see them organize into this big heart. But Unity Day is a chance to take a stand against bullying and creating the kind of culture and climate we want in our district. And so all of our schools participate in other ways. We encourage staff and students to wear orange. And then just gather to say, this is, you know, the culture we want. We want everybody to be included and safe. And that's who we are. That's what we are. So thanks to our schools and students for participating in that. Talked a little bit about reading, and in our spirit of reading, it's been fun to see the connections we have with our high school. Lots of different things come up throughout the year where we try to get the high schoolers into the building. So in this case, we had students from our Comunidad de Latinos Unidas and our Black Pride Organization affinity groups and other high school students going into Lincoln and Capoja, reading books, celebrating Hispanic heritage. They were reading both English and Spanish. And it's always fun that you can just see the look on the kids' faces, how much they look up to the older kids. And so anytime we have, I got a couple of high schoolers over here next to me that might have been participating, at least one of them in that. But just the way they look up to the kids. And so thank you to our high schoolers for always paying it forward and supporting our younger learners. And shared some of these things in the past. Lincoln has done a great job with in-school field trips. So they had an in-school STEAM museum. So STEAM, we love our acronyms, is Science, Tech, Engineering, Art, and Math. So they had an opportunity to do some hands-on learning. Over the course of two days, students got to spend an hour in a portable museum set up in the gym. They explored at their own pace, spending as much time or as little time. I love when you're there, the kids, just excitement when they get into the gym and doing different STEM activities, building an arch with giant blocks, which I think is fun to build, but even more fun to knock over from my experience with them. They enjoy that. And so just fun, fun things to get them engaged with STEM, 3D printing, other things. And so always trying to bring in that experiential learning, and we know that's valued by our community. And then I had one other one I was going to add that doesn't have a slide. But I got an email forwarded to me following our football game in Byron. And so a parent of a Byron student sent an email to Brady Krieger, our Athletic Director and Activities Director, just raving about our students, saying what amazing sports they were on the field. And then a really neat thing that they do down there, they invite the opposing team in for dinner. So they had dinner together. And he just goes on and on about how courteous our kids were, how respectful they were. For me, doesn't surprise me at all based on the interactions I've had with our students. I share that with, I mean, people who are around me a lot hear me say that. I mean, our kids are amazing. But I would also say the other thing I always add is that speaks volumes about the adults in their lives. So they're being raised right by their parents, other elders, our coaching staff, our teachers. So just wanted to share that positive feedback I heard on our students. All right, so then some dates to remember, things coming up. We've got some district-wide dates that are important. November 3rd, no school for students. November 22nd through 24th, no school with the holiday coming up. And then December 1st, so make sure to mark those calendars so you don't send the kiddos to school without any teachers in the building. And then some of the reasons behind that are here. So Capoja, October 26th, Family Night. But November 1st and 2nd, we've got our Student-Family Connect. And then November 2nd is a K-5 Flex Learning Day. They also have their PTA meeting on November 6th. Lincoln, Picture Retake Day on the 25th, so just in a couple of days here. So make sure if you need a retake. November 2nd, again, the Family and Student Connect and Flex Learning there as well. As we look at our secondary, we've got exciting concerts coming up. So we've got band and choir coming up on the 16th and 20th at 7:00. And then middle school, again, the same events going on with the elementary, the Student-Family Connect conferences. And then band and choir concerts on the 16th and 20th. And hard to believe, we're seeing winter athletics and activities. So we got a kind of rolling start of a number of things. But we've got girls hockey starting on the 30th. I mentioned the Wizard of Oz performance. Got gymnastics, girls basketball, and boys hockey starting on November 13th. Boys basketball on the 20th. And then boys swimming and diving, Miss Wrestling, wrestling on the 20th as well. So lots of transition. We will have our fall sports and activities in here soon to share the highlights of that. So looking forward to having them there. As always, our meeting materials are available online, and you can follow us on your favorite form of social media.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I like that tradition of the dinner after the football game. That's really cool.
Classy.
That is classy. So I'm so happy to hear how our kids were received. Next item is our consent agenda items that are financial claims, staffing and personnel in nature and are a part of the board packet presented to the board prior to the meeting and also available to the public. And looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion will carry. We have no policy items for review just yet, but don't worry. The Policy Committee has a lot to take on. They are meeting this week again to start reviewing a wealth of legislative changes that are impacting our school policies that we need to kind of run through and update. So more to come in that department. So that brings us to our business items. I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2023-24 Student-Tutor Agreement between South St. Paul Schools, Special School District Number 6, and the University of St. Thomas. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And for discussion, I will turn that over to Joel Miltier.
Great, thank you. This evening, we are bringing forward the agreement between the University of St. Thomas and the school district for student-teacher assignments. So we do have a student-teacher with the university that is doing their student teaching here in the district. Each year, we'll bring these agreements forward from the different universities as we get them and get students that are interested in doing their assignments in South St. Paul. And so we're asking for the school board this evening to approve this student-teacher agreement as we look to continue building our pipeline potentially of teachers into our school district.
Love that. Board, any questions or discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. Let the student-teachers come. Up next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the preliminary field trip request for spring of '24 IB History Trip to France and Italy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I turn that over to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah, you know, we're always looking for ways to provide our students with great opportunities. As far as field trips, if they're local field trips, that's something that's handled at the site level. So principals approve those. If they're involving travel between states, that comes to my desk. And then if it's international, in this case, it's a trip that involves visiting France and Italy, that comes to our board for approval. So we're asking for initial approval so that we can begin to make sure that there's enough interest and ability to offer that trip. So Conrad Anderson is looking to move that forward. So hopefully, we can give them the green light to get working.
Excellent. And I know during the Committee of the Whole, we had some additional discussion around sort of insurance and some of the pieces around that and cancellation, those kind of things. But certainly an exciting opportunity for some of our students. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. Up next, our last business item of the night. We have, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve scheduling a special joint work session with the South St. Paul City Council on Monday, October 30th, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. in the Training Room at City Hall. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, this is some work that we began quite a few weeks ago now, I guess, as we have been working with the city to sort of come up with some common and shared values. We're in such a unique circumstance with the city and the district sharing its very unique boundaries in our community that is filled with pride in both our city and the school system that is here. And we're kind of taking that opportunity to be as aligned with the city as possible. And so looking to kind of continue that work. We've now had, we had one large group meeting. We had a small group that helped kind of craft some of that language. And we'll continue that work going further. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That the motion carries. And we'll get together with the city next week at 5:30. Prior to our public board meetings, we always have our Committee of the Whole meetings. And with a great deal of focus on student achievement and the world's best workforce, we did not give all of our committee updates. And so we'll also take this time for board members to kind of give their board member report in some of the committees that they have been serving on. And let me start with Ann Claflin first.
Sure. Local issues has not met since the last time we met, but we'll meet on Wednesday, October 25th, at 8:00 at Central Square. And that's the local issues meeting that includes other elected officials, city staff, schools, businesses, Chamber of Commerce. We hear a lot about what's going on in the city and how we can work together.
That's wonderful. All right. Nikki Lolliberty.
Our Community Engagement Committee has not met. Excuse me. Hopefully, we will in the near future. But the Halloween get-together is next Tuesday. And we also have a couple of dates on the calendar for serving lunch at the senior center at Community Square, Community Center, whatever it's called. And...
Central Square.
Yeah, thank you very much. But we also would like to get some other things on the calendar to reach out and be involved with our community and families and kids. So you'll be hearing more about that.
Excellent, wonderful. Let me go all the way down to Kim Himmun.
Sure. Community Education met, and we had kind of a weird group there. So it wasn't a formal meeting, more informational for new members like me. But we did talk about combining some of the committees so that the publicity will also join with the committee that focuses on what needs the tri-district has. And the emphasis that we want to have this year is a continuation of last year's goals, which is to draw attention to our adult basic education program, which is housed here in South St. Paul at Central Square. And it's a great resource for lots of people in the tri-district area. GED opportunities, English language learning, technology, computer learning, just a lot of great classes that are available for free to our adult learners.
Wonderful, thank you. Wendy Felton.
Yes. Being the representative of our school district to intermediate District 917, which is their main office, is down in Rosemont at the VOTEC school. We held our annual event, the big gathering of all of the districts that attend 917 at the Humanities Center about a week and a half ago. It's always an interesting event, all the superintendents, board members, many staff members were there also. So that was a really good thing. And another thing with the VOTEC program, I'm going to show this here, if you can see it. There's a Career and Technical Educational Career and College Fair Program, which will be happening coming up this week on October 26th from 8:00 until 11:30 in the morning, which is held at Hastings High School. So you can, students, staff members, families, they can join. It's a free day of learning about technical careers and post-secondary opportunities. It's, like I said, it's being held at Hastings High School, and it's available, open to the public at no charge. And also, I am the South St. Paul Board Representative to the Educational Foundation in South St. Paul also. And as you've heard me talk several times about our gala, which is coming up in November, less than a month away. It's the week before Thanksgiving. As we call it, "Thanks-for-giving" as supporting our district. What I wanted to promote today was they are having some raffle drawings, which will be, the drawings will be held that day at South U Country Club. If anyone is interested in purchasing any of these tickets, they are $10 each. The drawings will be held that evening, that night. There's a beer raffle, a 50/50 raffle, and a wine bottle raffle. So obviously, I have the tickets for sale, and they can be purchased at the Education Foundation office if you'd like to contribute any finances to the gala. And they are also still accepting any items that you would like to donate because they are having a live auction and a silent auction. So, and it is a very, very fun event. If you're interested in coming to that at South U Country Club, please sign up at the Education Foundation right on Marie Avenue there, here in South St. Paul. And just a couple of other things. The Capoja Education Center, their PTA fundraiser is starting up now. The Metro Dining Club cards, which I personally have been buying every year, so many, many years. It's $30 for the whole big little box of cards. And the cards are good for an entire year. And it's a buy one, get one free majority of the items, the cards are. There's a lot of, a lot of very local items there also. Angelo's Pizza, The Dairy Queen, The Coop, a lot of several local restaurants, companies. Lot of supporters of our city are on that. So you can purchase the Dining Club cards at Capoja Education Center if you'd like. And a couple of other things that will be happening next week, when, as you know, the conferences in the schools will be held on Wednesday and Thursday. The schools are also having a book schools will be held on Wednesday and Thursday. The schools are also having a book fair. If you'd like to purchase a book item for your child, your student, you can purchase them in those buildings as they are fundraisers for each school. And then I look forward to seeing you all on Halloween. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Tim Felton.
The South St. Paul Open Board has not met since last meeting, so we're meeting this week.
Excellent. Monica Weber.
So the Association of Metropolitan School Districts has not met since we've had our last meeting. And so I have no updates on that to report.
Sounds like we got a lot of meetings on the books that are all coming very quickly as we sort of are ramping up into a whole bunch of things that are coming. So with no further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn our meeting tonight.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries, and our meeting is adjourned tonight at 6:51. Thank you so much.